February 27, 2023, in the City Council chambers for the City Council Study Session. Call the meeting to order and entertain the roll call, please.
Bergen.
Here I am.
Drinkow.
Here.
Kengis.
Present.
Myers.
Here.
Rothie.
Present.
Schneider.
Here.
And Bofors absent.
Yes, she is. Thank you. We'll move into item C, Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Item D is the approval of the agenda.
I will move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
First by Drinkow, second by Kengis. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. Agenda is approved. Section E is public comments for items not on the agenda. Please leave your comments to five minutes unless additional time is granted by the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the City Council as a whole and not to any individual member. Any public comments this evening? Don't believe so. This will move us into our study session calendar. Section F, item number one is the Historic Preservation Commission update. Our illustrious guest councilman.
Yes.
So take the front row seat.
Well, thank you. I see there were two items on tonight's agenda. I've just kind of moved seamlessly between the two, kind of almost in a reversed order. Good evening. My name is Darius Robinson, and I am the vice chairperson for the Waverly Historic Preservation Commission. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing us time tonight to present our annual written report for your review of our 2022 Certified Local Government Report for submission to the State Historical Preservation Office. 2022 was a big and successful year for the Waverly Historic Preservation Commission, and this success was the product of many hard years of work that preceded it. And of course, I would like to take but a moment to call out each member of our commission and those present here if they could stand. Chris Brunkhorst, our current chairperson, Karen Lehman, Don Meyer, Mary Meyer, Justin Shetler, Mary Gang. And of course, I'd like to call out our council liaison, Brian Bergen, and our staff liaison, city attorney, Bill Werger. Thank you so much. Our commission continued to exceed our mandate to meet quarterly, and as you can see, met almost every month with the exception of a reduced meeting frequency during the holiday season. And that hard work paid off, both for our commission and for the city of Waverly and its citizens. You should have the copy of our report as well as our future action plan in front of you. During 2022, we continued to strengthen collaborative partnerships with you, other commissions, offices, departments within the city of Waverly, the Waverly Public Library, the Bremer County Historical Society, Workburg College, the Waverly Shell Rock School System, local media, the Community Foundation of Northeast Iowa, local businesses, and the Waverly Chamber of Congress. Our May Historical Preservation Month Celebration and Open House remains our flagship event, starting with a proclamation by the mayor, exhibits around the city, and of course, our 2022 presentation at the South Riverside Park that included awarding to Rodney and Bonnie Drinkow, Randy and Karen Nuenendorf.
Advance forward.
I'm attempting. Seems a little bit difficult to go to next.
I know.
No, it's not. Be on the keyboard. Try that. It's not. The best life lands.
Pick it up and shake it. I had an Etch A Sketch. He used to do that. It was all good.
Unplug it, plug it back in.
Started off totally because your song. Yeah, it's locked up. Sorry, Rebecca. Wow. Maybe it wasn't good. Let me try. No, it's locked.
No, all right. Well, we soldier on.
Many lovely pictures. Use your imagination.
Looks great.
If people wonder why don't use PowerPoints in opening closings and for juries. Marvin and Catherine Orth with our prestigious Waverly Historic Preservation Award for their excellent.
Oh, now it ended. Oh, the bottom.
Restorative efforts in maintaining and restoring their, the historic and aesthetics of their beautiful homes. And we're just catching up here.
No, haven't.
Nice shirt.
Okay, so we've got. Come up here.
It's gotten less familiar.
It does.
Looks like you've been vacationing right there.
We'll see if we'll.
I like the airplanes.
I know.
There we go. Of course, these are pictures from our May celebration. We'll just advance forward. There's Rod and Bonnie, Nuenendorf, Orths. Okay, I think we're there. Of course, we installed public art and two signs to memorialize the Green Bridge. At the celebration, we were honored that artist Rebecca Hackerman accepted our invitation to talk about the stereoscope that was installed and which was properly entitled "The Visionary Sightseeing Binoculars." The celebration culminated in the unveiling of the Green Bridge stereoscope, which will continue to honor an important historical and cultural piece of Waverly for generations to come. We also continued to develop our walking maps and our QR codes to help guide citizens and visitors on their historic quests around our city. Most important in this endeavor, we supported the QR code development of signs by local resident Zachary Brunkhorst describing the history of the Rock Island Railroad at the Farmers Exchange and with the assistance of Leaver Services, if they're here, and a local architecture firm. In 2022, we were also successful in establishing the Workburg Historic District, and some of that work will continue actually into this year as we finalize the signage around that district. In July, we also partnered with the Ira Strudevent House Foundation to invite historian Rick Strudevent to present a program at the South Riverside Park about the history of the Rock Island Railroad. For 2023, we have developed and continued to refine our action plan, which you have before you, for the year. We are not a commission of individuals that likes to rest on our laurels. Our major initiatives are to increase our footprint in the community through finalization of the Green Bridge Memorial, finalizing the Green Bridge by installing a commemorative plaque on a preserved piece of the Green Bridge in Brookwood Park, hosting our annual Preservation Month Celebration in May, continuing to identify, recognize, and award home and business owners for their excellent restorative work, and launching a table tent campaign to bring historical knowledge and trivia to other areas of Waverly for its citizens and visitors as they move about their daily lives. We will maintain and develop relationships with local entities while continuing to strengthen existing relationships. We anticipate building good relationships with local civic organizations, Bremer County, both governmental and our neighboring communities, and individuals and families with historic ties to Waverly. And finally, we will continue to explore designation of an additional historic districts in Waverly or create additional awards and honorifics for notable historic entities, specifically continuing to look for creating a historic district in the northeast quadrant of the city and adding or replacing bronze plaques for entities accepted onto the Waverly Historic Register. We will also be working to reinstate the vanished places, markers, programs to commemorate historical sites that for one reason or another have vanished to the sands of time. We will also hopefully be finding a final, final resting place for Abe Downing, Waverly's greatest horse. True credit for what can only be described as heroic rescue efforts goes to city attorney Bill Werger for leading a team on an Indiana Jones-style excavation of this important piece of Waverly history. In conclusion, our commission is dedicated as a dedicated group of citizens, and we have continued and will continue to positively shape an appreciation of the rich cultural, architectural, industrial, educational, and agricultural history of the city of Waverly. And build for a person, whether they are the product of four generations here in Waverly or have relocated here four weeks ago, an appreciation of all that Waverly has offered, is offering, and will offer in the future. Financially, we are a fiscally lean organization while at the same time providing a disproportionately large relative to the fiscal cost to the taxpayer, to the quality of life for our citizens, and attractiveness of our city to its visitors. We continue to provide quality of life for locals and for those hoping to come here as we try to retain and attract a talented workforce. We appreciate your continued support and humbly ask that you review our CLG report for submission on behalf of our great city. Now open it up to questions. Hopefully, that was six to seven minutes.
So, Darius, what is the status of the historical district in the northeast section of town?
We're, I believe, we're still investigating it. I mean, it's still a work in progress. You know, the big success, I mean, this is one piece at a time kind of stuff. Last year's success was Waverly, or Workburg, you know? And this year, hopefully, we're going to really set our site on working up here in the northeast quadrant. Yeah, please.
We did have a drive-by. We had a drive-by survey several years ago, and at that point, they said it could be one gigantic district possibly, or three smaller ones, depending how many contiguous properties there are that meet the criteria. So really, the bottom line is to fund someone to write the application would require a grant or a benefactor.
Thank you for your presentation. I think a little bit of credit ought to go to Gary Brandt for the Abe Downing excavation because he was operating the giant piece of equipment that.
There's a lot of people there.
Yeah, a lot of people with channels, yep.
On Halloween, right?
I'm going on the phone.
Right around there.
Halloween.
It was cold. I know that.
It was Halloween because it needed to be done before November 1st.
Right, right.
It was Halloween Eve.
Yes, we didn't do it.
Halloween Eve.
That's right.
Other questions? Saved rounds?
We're good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen.
I think Indiana Jones would have been embarrassed, though.
Didn't have the good shoes on.
That's right. What's that? That caught into the ball. So item number two is the review of the Historic Preservation 2022 Certified Local Government Annual Report. That's what was enclosed in there. Bill has any additional comments?
I believe the commission is required to present it to us, and we are encouraged to review it, but they are required to present it. We're not required to approve it at all.
Correct, right.
But if anyone has questions, we can certainly answer that.
Pretty straightforward. We saw the same report, just different set of data. Without any further questions or discussion, we'll move into regular business. Section G, item number one, to cancel the public hearing for the fiscal year 2024 budget. Entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the cancellation of the public hearing on March 6, 2023, for the fiscal year 2024 budget.
Second.
First by Schneider, second by Drinkow. Council discussion, probably lead off with Mr. Bronner.
Sure. We place this on the agenda. As you know, the governor about a week ago signed the bill that would reset the rollback from the mistake they made in November. And with that happening, a couple of days are provided then for the state to get information out to the county auditors, who then must go back and kind of recertify our rollback figures and our valuations. They have up to you 15 days to do that, which would take us to possibly March 9. So in theory, we may not have had information, correct information, while we were having our budget hearing itself on the 6th. So we felt it was better after talking about, and then maybe we push it until the 20th. So on the 6th, we will actually reset that public hearing for the 20th. When we will have all the information, we'll know what the impact was. The other two bills that are still outstanding continue to move forward. They're not going to be very good for local government or financial situation, but we don't know the extent yet, depending on what happens with them. But this one will take effect for this particular budget. The others, I think, will hit more future budgets. So that was the reason we wanted to just go ahead and cancel it. We thought it'd be cleaner. Then we'll start over on the 6th by setting it for the 20th. And at that point in time, we should know a lot more about where we are for this current budget and possibly even what looks ahead for future budgets. So that's what we're asking you for tonight.
Those two bills have passed. Those would have zero impact on this next.
I think they'll take effect, depending on what portions of them you're looking at, because it's kind of all over the board. What we've seen mostly is the Senate study bills, which have now gone into Ways and Means Committee itself. We haven't really seen a lot of the House companion bills that we've been able to locate what the parallel is. So obviously, it would have to pass both houses, then be signed the law, before we would know anything. So right now, all we do know is that the rollback correction bill has gone through, been signed, it's done. We'll look at the effects of that. It'll be substantial. It's going to be $100,000 plus for us. And then the other two, we're just going to wait and see what does come out of it, as it kind of negotiates the bills going forward. There's a lot in both of them, from limiting growth through assessment caps to consolidating levies and eventually reducing those levies, to reducing industrial commercial property. Again, we went through that whole thing back in the 2013, 2014 years when the rollback is created and it was eventually taken away, as it's currently happening. The elimination of the local option sales tax, which will then be provided back to us. And I think that's the one I particularly don't really understand. If you're going to give it back, then why are we doing this in the first place? Unless you're not going to really give it back eventually, which is how things have usually gone forward, unfortunately.
The challenge with that is the uncertainty, because, I mean, how do you bond for something that you don't know?
We have talked about that today with our local option sales tax bonds. We're about to go through it in a few minutes. It does make it a challenge to the point, I don't know if I even could feel good about it, because the money's simply not there. But then again, we'll talk about that, do you make, unless that's a constitutional issue because it's been set and done? We'll have to look at that. I don't know. But that is part of the issue, is the uncertainty of not having a locked-in sunset date on that that we control makes it a little more difficult to really utilize that funding source going forward for anything long-term because you really don't know when and if it'll continue, just like the backfill that eventually is now being depleted away. So all that happening, I think the core issue for this particular budget is the one that's passed. Might have to go back and reread them again, but I do think most of the other items are for future budgets going forward or assessment dates that would cause a future budget to be an issue on it. Because I know the local option sales tax was 2025. That was going to be eliminated and then given back in some manner. So again, that's what we're facing right now, assuming that's it. I mean, it is only February, so we've still got time to go. You don't know what else may come up yet. That's what we know of right now.
Does this, or have we been given any kind of a grace period on our deadline for having the budget approved?
I think April 30th is now the new deadline. And for us, you know, we're at our max levies, which most cities are at this point anyway. So it really becomes a fund balance issue, which we have talked to death already. We're okay. We'll take that hit. I just don't see why it's necessary. Why couldn't have waited a year? Why wouldn't it have been something we could have adjusted to? So once again, it comes down to the timing as much as the impact for us to be able to react this quickly. And so the extra month, while that's nice, it really doesn't do much. I mean, it's, it really doesn't. So we'll still be done by the end of March unless something else severe happens, which I don't expect that to be the case. Everything else seems to have been addressed in one of the other two bills that are kind of moving forward, so.
So given that you're anticipating a drop in revenue, it sounds like of about $100,000, how does that affect us for the budget that we've been working on for next year?
I hit your fund balance. Hit your 810 levy. So unless we go forward with another round of cuts or another thing we've talked about, well, their staff, whatever it may be, we take that hit in our fund balance. And that's all you can do. Or again, you cut back to try and even it out. A lot of my peers already have their fees, and they're much worse than they even anticipated. Some of the hits were a lot bigger than they were thinking it was going to be. Because it's kind of a calculation of, you know, the multi-residential property class going away now. A lot of the homes that are in trailer parks, et cetera, are not included in the calculation. So it's a whole different calculation in general that occurs, not just we take this piece out. And that's why it was hard to really get a handle on how much it was going to be. We estimated $123,000 roughly. Could be worse, could be better. It was just really hard to get your pinpoint on that. So so far, the cities that I know of, it's been worse. And so we're going to kind of see what this ends up being, but there's not much we can do about it right now unless we're going to, again, go through another round of cuts. And we certainly can. It's just we've kind of been through two or three already from any position we had that was open, new positions, equipment, building improvements. We print out all of it. Good. Other than replacing broken equipment or things that we really have to have. So it would most likely come down to, you know, bodies at this point in time. It's not really that stuff I want to do right now, so.
Did I hear you say, though, at one point, you were going to go through this next year with a little more fine-toothed comb and look for that stuff? I mean, I know you got all the low-hanging fruit that was easy.
We're going to try and look at the structure and how we budget and what we have that I would call basically a sunk cost. And then what we have to determine going forward, depending what happens with these bills, what other things will impact as to where, what position are we really sitting in? Can we even affect a change? Can we do more? And what does that look like? So it's a little bit different approach. We were planning to go down this road in a year or two anyway. This has forced it way early and in a manner we didn't really have to do. It's just different. You're just struggling with a lot of different things coming at you from cutting down your revenue sources to your capping your ability to generate it to not knowing what's happening yet. Once the bills all settle and we get done with the legislative session this year, then a lot of the cities across the state and counties as well are affected by this. They'll have to really take a look at how do we move forward and what does that look like? And that's what we're going to do, too, is dissect this down farther than we ever would have normally truly to see what is sunken, what is a possibility, what are our equipment timings look like? And then we're struggling again to get stuff in in the right fiscal years. In fact, when you approve whatever budget you do approve on the 20th, there will be a barrage of requests you start ordering because it could be 15 months, two years, 10 months. We don't know, especially with some equipment still being difficult to get our hands on. So there's going to be a lot of that, so we can try and have that here by June 30 of '24. And that's what you'll kind of see coming. So if it's not just the other items, it's also the supply chain. It's still a factor there. So we're just battling a lot of things on multiple fronts that we haven't really had in the past, if ever. And then you combine them together, it's really kind of muddy. Try and figure your way through it, but we'll get there. We'll, at some point, like I said, this summer, we'll get through it. We'll bring back to you kind of what we find, what that budget does look like, and where are the areas we can maybe improve on. So that's about the best I have for you.
Okay. Anything further? All in favor of canceling the public hearing on March 6 for the fiscal year 2024 budget, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign. It is canceled. Item number two, Resolution 23-35. Resolution directing the sale of $1.5 million, subject to adjustment per terms of offering, local option sales and services tax revenue bonds taxable series 2023. Entertain a motion.
Move approval of Resolution 23-35, a resolution directing the sale of $1,500,000, subject to adjustment per terms of offering, local option sales and services tax revenue bonds taxable series 2023.
Second.
First by Rothie, second by Bergen. Get into council discussion, introducing Miss Maggie Berger with Spear Financial and Mr. Bronner.
It was a good day in the market, if you can call it a good day in the market. This was one of them.
It's the same, Doc.
I'll have Maggie kind of walk you through kind of where we ended up. And as everybody hopefully is aware of, this is the third and final phase of our Ball Diamond project, which if you haven't been out there, you should. Buildings are up, some of whom. It's really taking shame. So it's going to be amazing. This will finalize that piece of it, so.
Wonderful. Thanks, everyone. Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. The letter that we've provided for you is something that you similarly have seen in the past when we issued debt. Tonight's debt that we're asking you to approve is the local option sales tax and services tax revenue bonds taxable series 2023. These are taxable because we wanted to ensure that if there was any private activity as part of this bond issue, that we didn't incur any issues with the IRS. So it was, there was a, we had a finding done by bonding attorneys after numerous conversations with the administration to really confirm that we should be issuing taxable debt versus tax-exempt debt, which is typically what you've issued in the past for like your general obligation debt for public improvements. But I again believe because of the idea that the ball diamonds can be leased, the ball diamonds could have income coming in from private activity, things like that, it does put it into a whole different perspective there. We are going to ask that you would award to Northland Securities of Minneapolis, Minnesota at a true interest rate of 5.0687. Does that shock anybody? Because I've probably never said those words at Waverly before, right? That number.
It was hard to see.
So here we are, folks, with interest rates, but I remind you, they're taxable and they're revenue debt. So we do not see our general obligation tax-exempt debt for like your capital improvement planning coming in at the same rate right now. We're seeing those in the upper threes, maybe the low fours right now. This 5% was something we were anticipating. We don't want to see it, but we were anticipating that this is probably right where the market was going to be on these. You can see we did have four bidders today, the low being Northland Securities, the high being DA Davidson at a 5.53. So there was quite a gap. We find there to be quite a gap in interest rates usually in the revenue market. If we flip to page two, we think part of that gap was taken care of by the fact that Northland Securities was in conjunction today with Fidelity Bank and Trust of Dubuque, which obviously has a branch here. So we do anticipate that that was part of the reason that you were able to maybe get a little bit lower interest rate because they were working with your local bank who maybe had a little buy-in on this conversational piece. We also, as you can see, the interest rates on this page two are a 4.85% for the Northland Security bid. They are a 5% and then a 5.2 to 5.25, and then a 5 to a 5.5 on the other issuers. All of the issuers today did take a discount, meaning that they were. As you can see, this debt service levy looks pretty standard in the beginning. The last year, though, you will note, we have a very large payment in there, and that is just to work around some of your existing commitments of how you're using your local option sales tax receipts. So, we didn't really want to take this bond out any further than that really eight-year mark, but we also wanted to make sure that we were, we were sort of backloading the debt to work around other commitments. Not that you have local option sales tax revenue debt, but that you have debt that's like maybe general obligation debt or other, you know, projects or leases or things that you're paying with those local option sales tax receipts. The bonds are callable after June 1 of 2028, so if at that point in time, interest rates are lower than the 4.85%, we would look at them to see if there's any refinancing, if you had money ahead, if you were sitting on receipts ahead at that point in time, you could pay them off in whole, pay them off in part at that point in time. So, with that, I'd answer any questions that you have, but I would also reiterate the comments that Mr. Bronner was making beforehand about legislative actions. At this point in time, you know, the effect of local option sales tax, we don't know what that's going to be. We don't know if it'll come to anything. If it does, we don't know if there would be language in there that would protect you because you've already constitutionally issued sales tax revenue debt. What I can tell you from the words of your bonding attorney is if there's nothing in there, grandfathering these types of bonds in, typically then you see class action lawsuits come about from the cities who are sitting on local option sales tax. And they have to do that to protect their investors, because you've made a commitment to the investors tonight under the current law. That was another reason, I can tell you, that we kept the debt short. We had numerous conversations that maybe we could have gone out a little bit further on this. We decided to keep it debt, the debt short, knowing that these items were happening, that conversations were happening. There was also language added to your official statement, and Mr. Bronner may have discussed that with you two weeks ago, but there was language added to that official statement from your bonding attorney that sort of outlined what's happening in the legislature, that we have no idea what's going to happen, but giving some information to these investors so that they know what potentially, you know, could be happening or what they could be looking at. We know that they are, they're looking at language like that in every other state that's going through their legislative session as things come and go, but we will have to just keep monitoring it and then, again, get advice from the bonding attorney at that point in time as to what the final bill says. But at this point in time, we're moving forward that you would have this obligation outstanding against your local option sales tax.
So, that debt schedule kind of aligns with Cedar River Parkway and some of those other projects.
And as we talk through budgets, so Cedar River Parkway will pay off the year before this one will pay off. And that $600,000 on the payment you're already making for Parkway, that's why you see that $600,000 folded right behind it instead of front-loading and using more local option sales tax, not having it not be available. Now, we've made as much available as we can as we continue to go through, because we don't know what's going to happen in the next how many years with that. And if you front-load it, that puts you in a little more risk of not having the ability to provide, you know, police, fire, ambulance, things you already paid for out of there. And so, that backloading will, as if it never happened, it's just an extension of that one year. And so, it will not be impactful at that point in time.
The true lost reprieve won't come until a year after, actually, two years after the bridge is paid for, the Parkway?
Correct.
So, just to, I want to play some scenarios here. If sales tax revenue, for whatever reason, just misses horribly, do we just rebond then at that point?
No, we would look at having the tax for part of the things in there that we are choosing to pay for from local option sales tax, like the Parkway bond, but do not have to. That's the difference between doing a general obligation bond with the ability to pay for it as you deem necessary, knowing you can tax for it eventually. We chose the local option sales tax and TIF because it provided no impact of property taxes. So, $11 million did not affect property taxes at the time. If things go to where we cannot make that, this one, we have to make out a local option sales tax. It is specifically that kind of a bond. The other items, we would tax for potentially, again, police, fire, all that. That could be general fund taxed. So, that's how you would have to handle other things do not meet what we're looking at. And we are still looking at a surplus each year being generated. We are not using all of it as we go forward to try and keep building. Because the other item that we probably could touch on briefly, so when you have revenue bonds, we will have $150,000 sitting aside that we can't touch in that fund as well. And that is necessary because, again, local option sales tax revenue bond, we could either have borrowed that, set it aside. We chose to use the reserves we already had in that fund, and so, it has just been allocated out and will sit there, but that can also help make the final payment when we do that. So, it really won't be 600, it'll be 450, because 150 is already being held out for that purpose. So, that's why Maggie's here. It's why we have bond attorney. It does get complicated, but that's why we work the system the way we do, to provide you the best level set of debt that you can have throughout the year instead of spikes and valleys, and that's our whole goal. And the same thing's happening with the other bond we'll look at in April, May. We'll hold that for a year, because that'll, again, role-play when it's falling off, so you will limit any kind of valley and mountain that thing. It'll stay very level throughout.
Right. James referred to the Debt Service Reserve Fund. It's funded at $150,000. It's being paid for with cash, so it's not coming out of your bond proceeds. Otherwise, we would have had to issue more in debt. That sits there because what if people quit spending? What if you quit going to Walmart and you quit going on Amazon and this and that? That's a reserve fund that's there in case you're unable to make a payment. There's a cushion. There's a cushion there that, you know, and that's, that's common in all revenue debt, whether you're doing, you know, water revenue debt, sewer revenue debt, local option sales tax, TIF revenue debt, anything that is technically a revenue debt only payable by the revenues of the system requires that Debt Service Reserve Fund.
It's like the PMI.
So would.
Anything further?
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Maggie.
Thank you, Maggie.
Roll call, Carla.
Schneider?
Yes.
Rothie?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Cengis?
Yes.
Bergen?
Yes.
And Schneider?
Yes.
Vote of six to zero and one absent. We're in executive session. Thank you very much.